I need you to set a timer today.
If I have it, you bet.
But you have your own phone, right?
Yeah, I'll take it off.
Okay. So you'll need to do that. All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome everyone to today, which is October 28th, to the regular Groton Board of Education meeting. And we start off our meeting just reviewing our mission statement and the board goals. And our mission is teaching and learning. Our board goals is to provide dynamic, rigorous curriculum, to ensure effective and engaging instruction, and embrace excellent learning environment. And at this time, I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Newsom, would you be willing to lead us in the allegiance?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a... Okay, thank you. All right, so, sorry, we just had some communication about a board member who will be coming in late. So I know we have a huge crowd and I am so excited about what's going to happen next, but, Board, may I orient you to our agenda for a second, please? One of the things that we received is that Dr. Gwinier and staff has asked if we do a motion for the Hiking Club field trip, which was happened in May, and that also it just inadvertently did not get on the agenda when Dr. Gwinier and I were talking about that. So we just needed to do those two, and so I just needed two-thirds, is it a two-thirds vote, to add these two items. So I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
To add the Hiking Club, as well as the Charles Barnum Elementary School, to operate as a magnet school.
Thank you. And Lee has seconded. Do I have any discussion about these two things? Hearing none, all those in favor of adding these two items to our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion has carried. The second thing that I would like to bring us to attention with the agenda is we do have a huge portion, or a large portion of it, talking about our school curriculum, the high school curriculum, that I believe has gone to the curriculum committee. It has handled our new process, and I know some of the administrators are here to talk about it, and so I am just wondering if we can move that up front, and then the other discussions that do not necessarily require other bodies to be handled at the end. So if you guys can remind me of that when we get to that point, that would be dandy, but that's what we're going to do, is move that forward and then carry on with our agenda. Awesome. With that said, Dr. Gwinier, can you please introduce our guests?
Sure. I am thrilled tonight, if Michelle McCroskey could come forward. Michelle is a language arts teacher at Westside. Some of you may remember, we have a school called Westside Middle School. And she had a project last year where a number of students submitted writing, some eighth grade students, and they submitted it, and Michelle will tell us a little bit about it, but suffice to say that they were recently published. So we have some published authors with us tonight, and maybe they could, can I just have them come up, please? So would the writers, the published writers, former Westside students, please come forward?
Can you all come up? Yeah, all of you come on.
All right, well, these are the true rock stars of the evening, so I'm really thrilled.
Can we just peel the microphone off and then?
Okay. All right, you guys, I'll let you guys come up. My name's Michelle McCroskey, and we, you know, of course, are trying to support the rigorous curriculum of an IB learner profile, so to be those enquirers and knowledgeable thinkers and be the game changers of our world. So one of the first initiatives this past year with Teachers College, at Columbia Teachers College, was the dystopian novel unit, The End of the World Goes Arigh. At the same time, as well as they finished the new book club, so thank you for all your grants and your support, they got these great books, I saw this contest that I thought would be a great culminating activity for the students to take part in. It was just a hundred-word mini saga. So to get them prepared, at the time, the UN report just came out, May 6th, Associated Press, that nature is in the worst shape in human history. So I brought in the real life with what they read in dystopian, we read some book jackets, and then they started. So, like I said, they're just short little snippets. We, I scanned them in, and then we put them into the contest June 7th of last year, so that was great. At the end of the year, these eighth graders were doing wonderful work, and we've heard back this year at the end of September that all 14 of them have been selected to be published. So not only will they get a published book, they're still part of a contest. In the letter, it said that they've never selected this many from one school or group. So it was 7,500 applicants, you guys, from middle school to high school, so they competed all the way through 12th grade. And these 14 kids were published. So there's three of them that would like to read. David, I'm going to have you. It's only, like I said, 100 words. Can you come up? They came up with their own titles and their own stories.
Where are you attending school now?
Oh, I'm attending North Tree Academy.
So it was great, because I had to think out of the box and find them all, so I did find them all, and it was great. And I have to say thank you to the guidance counselors of Ledgerd High School and NFA, because I contacted them, and Erin and our staff at Fitch, they were incredible. And then even as far as Virginia, because one of our students now, part of the military, he's left, but I was able to get ahold of the family, and they also will be published, so that's great. Title.
Okay. So, I call it Found. My name is David Dozier. So, humans had their chance to live. Time we thought we had expired. Everything we had built is annihilated. Honest Christians warn humanity about the end. I was left lost in a mephisto-feeling world. Life is just a long-forgotten memory. Man's kind worth is to worship the beast. Its iniquity is all we remember. Six, 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 Marx says his, forever being tormented by his law. It uses demons to search for the few people who remain intransigent, refusing its villainy. Lamentably, it found me, and I'm on my way to eternal death. Wait, it's him! He's returned for all.
I have to say, David did an incredible job. He did a lot of research in, like, Seven Sins and how, like, The World Goes Arigh and signs of that, in order to write that. So he, I think, like, redid it, what, like, 10 different times? And I was like, that's it, it's June 7th, you gotta go with this one. But they were all incredible. Seven, come on, come on. Okay.
Michelle, make sure they get close to the mic, please.
Okay, perfect.
You're in here, bye. Oh, you're second. Sorry. Hold on, sorry. There you go, there you go.
My name's Yaya Mantsor. My saga is called Attack on Humanity. It was the next great war. All hell broke loose, but they took it too far. Paraguay had launched a nuclear missile at the core of the Earth. The floor below me shook in powerful waves, each one stronger. Buildings around me toppled in blocks like Genghis Khan's pieces. Blood covered each brick. Breaking news, tsunamis in Japan, earthquakes in the Americas, tornadoes and lightning infested the Earth like a virus. Food was depleted, and all disease broke free. The streets were now colored in red. The streets were now colored red in blood, as if each road got a gruesome new paint job. We were now facing the end.
Wow.
This is Devon Quadras, Invisible Killer, End of Life.
After taking down North Korea, the devil was unleashed. Omega-13, a brain-stemming virus, broke out. It resisted all antibiotics. North Korea was going to drop it on the United States and wipe out everyone so they wouldn't be opposed. I'm the last being left known in existence. Even animals ceased to be. I hijacked a spaceship no one noticed during the anarchy. If only I knew how futile it was. My food and water will be exhausted within the month. I'm doomed. If life exists, read my journal, it's filled with human history. I'm Devon Quadras, saying goodbye.
We have two more that I would like to read.
Absolutely.
I'm Rihanna Bhutat, and I wrote All of Me. The world ended two weeks ago, when all of Earth's nations told their governments to commit mass genocide. This happened in hopes of saving our Earth. If you get rid of humans, the planet can heal itself. Everyone around me has died, but by some twisted miracle, I was one of the few survivors. You see, I have dissociative identity disorder, which means I have multiple personalities. I'm like five different people, all in one body. And now, since I'm one of the few left, I've been tasked with saving the world, all while dealing with four other alters. Great.
Our gorgeous city. Our gorgeous city had been reduced to ruins. Filled with aching hearts, it was less of a home and more of an unknown place we hadn't seen before. I truly understood what war could do to the world now, to think it started as an argument over weather. Then, when it escalated, if only one person had stopped bickering and paid attention to the danger outside, we could have at least been prepared. Facing a war and a hurricane? Why us? What did we do to deserve this? What did we do to deserve to lose our home? Our gorgeous city.
That's Emily Pelleron. And Aiden is going to cap off, and we'll give you a copy of this. Each student, because they got so into it, after reading about the world climate change reports, they each took their own species of their own, and then they researched them, and then they wrote poems about what would happen to the demise of their species if we continued on the trajectory that we were in. So he's going to read his little Mission catastrophe, and then he'll just read the poem, we'll end off with that, okay?
The title of my story is On the Run. Silence, then a crack. The nearest tree shattered into a tidal wave of splinters, slicing my skin open in multiple places. I took off running, zigzagging through the trees, the sounds of its genetically-modified assaulting my ears. The government had a wonderful idea to control us by slipping poison into our water supply. A man with claws leapt out of the bushes clawing my back, lions, better than the owl-men on their silent wings. Ignoring the pain, I kept running. Day after day, everyone's always running. Anything would be better than getting torn open by those monsters. The title of my poem is called Cruelty, and it was about the white rhino. What have we done? Hundreds of mammals on the run, ivory tusks, lives turned to dust. The time has come to take action, each species reduced to a fraction. Read about their innocence, how can you make a difference? Ivory tusks, lives turned to dust. No one knows their sadness, our final chance to end this madness.
Wow.
Each student came up with a poem. The poems still line the halls of Westside, I'm very proud of them. They hit all the STEAM initiatives, because we are a STEAM school. Arts is totally a full part of our success in science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. So thank you for giving us this time, and thank you guys for being my brilliant students. You inspire me.
Yeah.
And thank you, parents. Each student is going to grab a copy and give you, so you can look at the poems and the other copies. Fortunately, thank goodness, for Google Drive, I was able to get them all from the Google Drive.
To the family and parents that have each one of your kids, thank you very much for sharing them with us. I keep on saying how Groton proud I am, but this is just a wonderful demonstration about why we are Groton proud. Nice job, guys.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, I didn't get one either, but that's okay. Oh, here it comes.
Thank you so much. I...
Yeah, one more for Jen. Yeah.
We have one more board members coming.
All right. All right, once again, thank you very much. We are going to move...
Oh, yeah, I will.
Thank you.
I'll do another. She's just answering. Thank you, Michelle.
All right, so I'm going to move us on to the comments portion of our agenda, that the Board hears comments from citizens, agenda items and other subjects of concern that lie within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. This is the portion of the agenda where the Board welcomes comments from the citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton and blah 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 blah, and a possible submit written comments, I lost my way. Presentation should be related to matters, okay. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments from citizens' portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. Ms. Joan, who is the first, is it Mr. Newsom? Mr. Newsom, please. How are you, Scott?
How are you doing this evening? Scott Newsom, 56 Hilltop Road, Mystic. I just had a couple of points to make. The first one is, as you know, we have this issue where the town attorney has issued an opinion regarding the grants that typically don't come through the town. As of right now, you know, the budget session is coming closer and closer, especially for you guys. I'm hoping that you will at least come up with a plan. I would like to see the RTM and the town council and the board, maybe a small group of people, maybe get together and meet and discuss some of the issues, because I understand that the Board's got concerns. I truly understand that. And, but we have to kind of work through this and figure out what we're going to do, because by the time we get to the budget session, it's just going to be chaos, and we want to avoid that. So I would just urge that you think about that, and please consider communicating with us, because we would really like to just work through it and do what's in the best interests of the town and obviously the kids. The second thing I'd like to say is, I know that when we make Cutler Middle School an elementary school, I know that you're going to get rid of the tennis courts and the basketball hoops and the two baseball fields, and you're going to replace it with just one baseball field. And I would just say that that area has been the focal point for community recreation for at least 26 years that I've been in Groton. It's easy to bike to, kids play there all the time, they can't get up, or they're less inclined to go all the way up the hill, on Route 1, to get to the middle school, if you're in our neighborhood. It's not easy. And so they bike to Cutler Middle School. Well, that's going to be taken away. And so I would just request that when you're doing the new elementary school, please think about putting in some additional playing space, because that really is kind of a community space. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Joan?
Thank you, good evening. Roseanne Katuski, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District 5. My comments tonight are regarding Board of Ed off-budget grant money. At the Board of Ed's special meeting on October 7th regarding off-budget grant money, it was disappointing what the superintendent chose not to say. Can I just wait? I have something to pass out. Can I pass that out?
Sure.
Okay, a second. My comments tonight are regarding the Board of Ed off-budget grant money. At the Board of Ed's special meeting on October 7th, 2019, regarding off-budget grant money, it was disappointing what the superintendent chose not to say. Unfortunately, some Board of Ed members were unfamiliar with the issue and were not informed regarding the conversation with the superintendent and the RTM for the past nine months. This could easily have been clarified if the RTM members present at the special meeting were recognized by the chair. Here is the history of the conversation and interaction with the superintendent and the RTM regarding off-budget grant money. Last January, Representative Pasqualini asked the superintendent questions regarding off-budget grant money. Unfortunately, he was unable to attend the next several RTM meetings. In February, I followed up on his questions regarding off-budget grant money. In March, the superintendent provided the RTM with a presentation of how off-budget grant money is being spent. Information distributed indicated that there is $4,612,606 in off-budget grant money in fiscal year '20. This presentation generated many questions from RTM members. One was to ask the town manager to check with the town attorney why off-budget grant money did not follow the same approval process as town of Groton off-budget grant money. On April 5th, the town manager provided the RTM and town council with an explanation of the town attorney opinion regarding off-budget grant money. At the May and June RTM meetings, the superintendent was asked the status of how the Board of Ed is complying with the town attorney opinion. There was no answer. There were no RTM meetings in July or August. In September, the question came up regarding, came up at the RTM meeting. No answer. On September 12th, I sent an email to the Board of Ed Chair and others asking questions. On September 26th, I received a response from the Board of Ed Chair, which stated, "This is where things are at. I sent a letter to both Sima and Patrice stating that I am awaiting to have a full discussion on this matter. Once we have had this conversation, I will send a notice to both the RTM body and town council." While I appreciated the Chair's response, it was five months since the town attorney opinion was provided to all elected officials in town. The fact that the Board of Ed was awaiting to have a full discussion in October is frustrating. This is what led up to the Board of Ed's special meeting on October 7th. I was under the impression that the discussion at the special meeting would focus on complying with the attorney opinions and charter language. However, the conversation focused on whether or not the Board must comply with the town attorney opinion and Board of Ed attorney opinion at all. Also, there was much confusion at the meeting, when the superintendent, by omission of the history of the RTM and this issue, left the impression with the Board of Ed that this issue just popped up out of nowhere. There is one more point I would like to make. I do not disagree with how the Board of Ed is spending the off-budget grant money. In fact, I was impressed with the March Board of Ed presentation to the RTM. The question I have regarding off-budget grant money is what happens to the additional staff, equipment, programs, et cetera, when the grant ends? I understand this is a current concern with the existing middle school grant. The answer seems to be the additional staff, equipment, programs will be folded into the budget. That is the area that needs more transparency from the Board in the future. It is important that the Board of Ed comply with charter language and attorney opinions regarding all expenditures, including off-budget grant money. This will provide the town council and RTM the same review process as other expenditures. Considering that we have a town attorney opinion as well as a Board of Ed attorney opinion agreeing that off-budget grant money should be reviewed and approved as other town of Groton off-budget grant money, it is past time that the Board of Ed establish a policy for approval. The Town Finance Director has provided the document Revised Administration Regulation Grant Money, dated June 5th, 1996. This policy could easily guide the Board of Ed, Town Council, and RTM in developing a policy for Board of Ed off-budget grant money approval. Thank you. And I brought for your review that policy.
Awesome, thank you.
I think we actually have that in our minutes already, from that meeting on October 7th.
Do you have the town, the finance director?
You know, could you just do me a favor? Could you just leave it with Joan? And then absolutely, I'll make sure that all board members get that. Thank you, Roseanne. Thank you very much. Are there anyone else?
Portia Bordelon, 159 Shenacostet Parkway, Groton. For full disclosure, I'm a parent of two students in the Groton Public Schools and recently appointed to the town councilor, so I am a town councilor. I am speaking on behalf of myself, not for the voice of the whole town council. First, I'd just like to say thank you to Westside Middle School for what an awesome presentation, as I feel sometimes Westside is underlooked at times in the community, and sometimes, as you know, as I speak, often underserved. And it's so inspiring, as a former graduate of Westside with the last year of the school, to see children being published, coming out of there. So it's a wonderful thing, and I couldn't be more proud of the accomplishments of those students. I also want to say today, I'm also in support, I know you guys are going to be reviewing some curriculum. The Communications 2 class, I think, is an asset to our district and long overdue to be put into fruition here in the town. I can speak on behalf of my own student who took Communications 1 and was looking for more. Not every student is a writer. More people, some students need the ability to speak and learn how to advocate for themselves, especially in a technology world that we live in. It's very important, especially for different career paths and choices they choose to do. So I hope tonight that you do support the Communications 2 class for Fitch High School. I've also spoken in regard to the water. I know that we've gotten the levels down to allowable. I still firmly believe in this district, despite what the state regulations are, we can make a decision to make our allowable level in this town zero, or next to nothing or barely traceable. When I asked at the last several times or meetings or whatever, what is our plan to monitor the allowable levels, I was told, we're looking for a direction from the state. I was wondering if any direction has come back, because once lead is traceable in the water and school is shut down for a week, or two, or days, it would need to be flushed, because if you tested that water at allowable level after a long weekend or holiday, the level, some other student could go to the fountain and be hit above the allowable level. So I just wonder what the action plan with that is. I also have spoken about the fieldhouse. If we're not going to continue the tradition of spray painting it, as a person who lives in the community and representing the town and having other visitors come to the town, we must keep up with our sports facilities. Once again, I feel that our sports facilities in this town, for our high school, being a Class L school, are behind the curve. And one, which is an eyesore in my opinion, others may think it's beautiful, and I respect that, that fieldhouse needs to be painted. It's a mess. Not the fieldhouse, the concession stand and the restroom area. Not very attractive, not something that you want to see as you're paying five bucks to walk down the hill. With that, using the restrooms there, the simple maintenance needs to be done. One of the restroom doors doesn't even have a lock that can close, nor is there any trash cans in the individual, two individual stalls for sanitary napkins or personal feminine hygiene products. After the thing this weekend, I noticed for people, were probably embarrassed to bring them out of the bathroom, to throw them away, they discarded them on the floor. That's a public health concern. As a person who's also battling with medical concerns, I can't use the outhouse because of the germs, but I shouldn't have to walk in and find that on the floor. But to the person who needed to use the bathroom, they shouldn't be embarrassed by the line to have to carry that out. That should be rectified, and those doors should be able to be locked appropriately and closed. Couldn't even close it, you had to hold them. Moving forward, looking at the district as a whole, I know that there has been talk about moving a plastic ordinance through. Looking at the schools, it's discouraging to me and almost disappointing that we are still serving our children on styrofoam trays and cups. Styrofoam was never intended to have hot products on it. And I just think as a district, we should really start to look into that. We can build new schools, but let's think about the health and well-being of our students in the schools and providing styrofoam trays with hot pizza... in the schools and providing styrofoam trays with hot pizza that's melting on it. I don't, it's no discredit to the cafeteria staff who do a wonderful job providing the best meals possible, but we can call it farm-to-table. But putting farm-to-table on styrofoam food is not a good impression to put forward to these ever-changing students that are talking about poems with environmental changes and those scary aspects, when we're still teaching them and giving them the rights to use styrofoam. So I just encourage, maybe you'd maybe make a referral on that one, and even consider that, looking into how we can do better. Even one step of getting rid of the styrofoam change trays would be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Portia.
Thanks, Portia.
Hi, Kathy Chase, 146 Indian Field Road. And I am a RTM member, representing District 1. I just wanted to add a little something to what Representative Kotowski said. And I know there was concern at one of the other Board of Ed meetings about the RTM not meeting often enough and you might miss grant opportunities. And I just wanted to let you know that referrals can be made and the RTM can meet, and they can also do special meetings. So if there is given enough notice that, so there shouldn't be any concern that you would lose any grant money. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hello, my name is Beverly Washington. I live at 30 Pennsylvania Avenue in the city of Groton. I'm just here to ditto what Portia talked about with the fieldhouse and the concession stand, because I was at the band competition on October, I forget what date it was, 21st, no, 19th. And she's absolutely right. When the women went into the bathroom, the door was open and we had to wait in line. I mean, it is a mess down there, so I don't want to go on and on. I just want to ditto what she said. And the second point I'd like to make is, with the off-budget grant money, you probably figured I was going to comment on that, that I do hope that the Board comes to it with a policy or procedure, so we can all work together. We don't want to take your money on the RTM, but we do want a policy or procedure on how to deal with the off-budget grant money. Thank you. And you're doing a fantastic job with the schools.
Is there anyone else? Yes.
Hi, my name is Fram Whitney. I'm at 112 Deerfield Ridge Drive in Mystic. And I just have a couple quick comments, nothing major, but one thing, I was happy to see that the Northeast Academy Indoor Air Quality was on the CIP recommendation list. I hope that moves forward, because there have been times where I've been in the building and I know I smelled musty, and our kids' health is really important, so air quality should be something that we definitely look into moving forward with. So we appreciate that it's on there. Also, I saw that class size guidelines are posted, and that's great, because class size is directly related to how much contact the students get with the teacher. And I hope that, moving forward in planning, that's considered when the classes are planned. Because I think what happens sometimes is maybe when the classes are planned, they have the max limit in the planning, but then kids shift. And I know that some classes already exceed those guidelines that you have listed there. So going forward, I hope that's considered in the planning phases, and they're not maxed out right from the beginning, especially in the lower grades in elementary and middle schools. And also, I wanted a comment. I love that I saw there's a grant going forward with the Cutler Acts of Kindness Initiative. I would hope, I hope to see more initiatives that focus on positive climate and culture and supporting our students in learning how to be kind and good people, because citizenship is so important. So I just wanted to say, that's great, you got that grant, and good job. Thank you, keep it up.
Okay, but can I ask? Okay. So are there any other people? Well, I know that there's other people. I guess, are there any other people who would like to make comments? All right. All right, so we're now on responses, and so, Rita?
I have a clarification. The first time the Board of Education was, you know, informed, was at that meeting on October 7th about the RTM's request. So Board members weren't aware of this, it was the first time we had seen this information. So I think that's important, even though there was this nine-month process, we didn't know about it. Right, and I appreciate that. The other thing is that I believe our class sizes are to be commended, and they're really, I mean, I would like to see what schools Mrs. Whitney was referring to, because I am very impressed with the class sizes in Groton, Connecticut, compared to many, many other towns. So recently, I know in Hartford, a friend of mine is a principal, and the average class size is 28 for students. And that, to me, is outrageous. But I think we try to do a very good job of keeping our class sizes low, so we have a lot, we have a lot of student contact. And if there is one that is over 25, there is an aid there. Thank you.
So, is there any other comments? Because I just would like to make a couple of things. So just for the people who are having concerns about the grant approval process, as Roseanne, as I talked to you on the phone, is that I don't feel any member of the Board does not want to comply with what the charter has. And so there was a delay, and once again, I think I described it to you, is that the delay actually was more on my end, because of some personal things that were going on. And so that is an apology that I offer to the Board as well. But the good news is, is that actually, there is a non, there's an attempt to schedule a meeting between Simma, who is the moderator for the RTM, Patrice, who is the town mayor, and myself, and John Burt, and Dr. Guinear, to come up with a process that we then can share to the Boards. So truly, and I don't want to go into budget with this not resolved, because I don't want to make it any more difficult as that it is. So I want to let you know that that is absolutely, you have my promise, that that will happen. And I just, Dr. Guinear, I am wondering if you can request some, looking at the maintenance of the fieldhouse, if those conditions are present, that is deplorable, and that is not, since that is our flagship school, that's not how it should look. But I do want to encourage our RTM and our Board members that the buildings are sort of owned by the town, so we would want to work with you guys on making sure that we have enough budget money to kind of keep those things up and running, the way that they should be. But the maintenance issues, we definitely need to take a look at. I sadly am not aware that we are using styrofoam trays, and so I don't know what other people feel about that, but maybe that's something that we can make, that we can make-
It's underway.
It's underway?
We're reviewing it, hopefully.
Okay, good, because that would be great, and that might be something that needs to go to the financing facility meeting, to kind of take a look at sort of what would that mean in terms of budgetary concerns for us to move to styrofoam. So I appreciate, all those comments are worthy. Gretchen?
Yeah, I'm, it's, my mind. When the RTM, if they pull a special meeting out of the blue, will there always, I mean, I know there are times where the RTM has a challenge meeting, the minimum number of people needed to make a vote. So if you are pulling a special meeting, so that we can get a grant in on time?
I guess what I hear from them, Gretchen, or I hear from, and I don't want to speak for Representative Chase, is that you guys would go way above, beyond, if that we have a grant and there's a deadline to make sure that happens. So, once again, once we get the policy, that will kind of, and hopefully, we can kind of delineate that as well.
Okay, I just wanted to-
Right, and the concerns about the fields, I think that that goes back to, and I believe that's on the agenda for the permanent school building as well, to kind of take a look at fields, because that's also a park and rec concern as well. So I think that we are trying the best that we can. All right, if I hear no other comments and concerns, let us move on. Student representative report. Hello, my friend.
Hello. My fellow student representative Zay is not able to be here tonight, so I'll be pulling double duty and doing all of the notes. I want to start off with updates from last meeting. So on Thursday, October 17th, the humanitarian club put on a Paint for Bahamas night, where anyone else was allowed to come in and paint and do different crafts, and all of the money went to the funds for Bahama relief after the hurricane. And then this week, from October 8th to November 1st, is our Spirit Week, which is why I'm wearing red, white, and blue for American Monday. And if there's any paint on my face, it's because face paint is really hard to get off your face. So Monday is American Monday, Tuesday is Pajama Day, Wednesday is Wacky Wednesday, Thursday is Character Day, and Friday is Fitch Friday, and also the day of our pep rally. All grades will be getting their pep rally shirts passed out to them this Wednesday, and all of the shirts were designed by each respective class council, so anyone who bought the shirts will be receiving those. Moving on to class council updates, seniors are selling chocolates and getting ready for homecoming. Juniors are hosting Tailgate this year, which will be on the day of the homecoming game against NFA. Juniors will be hosting, or sorry, sophomores have a puffy paint pizza party this Wednesday, October 30th, at Fitch and the Falcon Cafe, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It costs $5, and all students get to design their pep rally shirts, where they can bring their own shirt while eating pizza. And freshmen are continuing to organize their class council. Moving on to homecoming, so homecoming is this Saturday, November 2nd, from 7:00 to 10:30 p.m. in the Fitch High School. The theme is Star Unite. Tickets will be sold for $20 at Lunch Waves this week, and all proceeds will go to the senior class. This, on November 5th, it's Regional Professional Development Day, so students don't have to come to school. And then there will be a FAFSA night for seniors on Wednesday, November 6th. So this is where seniors are able to come with their families and get the FAFSA done, which can be a very challenging and stressful thing for a lot of families. So many local and regional FAFSA experts and the Fitch High School's school counseling staff will be there that night to help families complete the FAFSA form. And anyone interested should sign up for a specific session through a link that was sent to senior parents through email, and is also available on the Fitch website. On Saturday, November 9th, from 9:00 to 2:00 in the Fitch High School cafeteria, is the craft fair. So there will be over 50 crafters and local vendors, and food will be available for sale. I know from experience, there's a lot of very cool things there. And all proceeds will go to the Fitch Music Department. This past Friday, October 25th, More Than Words had their first inter-district meeting at the New London Science and Technology High School. So that was where the respective clubs from More Than Words all got together, from Ledgerd High School in New London and at Fitch. And it was definitely a very, very good meeting. I can speak from experience, because I'm the president of the Fitch More Than Words. And I know that a lot of activities had to be scrapped, because it was so much conversation going on, which is great. And so we all discussed discrimination, and we brainstormed possible actions that student-led groups at each high school can take to make the school a more inclusive and welcoming place for all students. Renaissance will be putting on the Sandy Hook Promise Start with Hello Week next week, from Monday, October 4th to Friday, October 8th. This week will be full of various events that will promote inclusion and raise awareness about social isolation. And then finally, moving on to Fitch Athletics, volleyball defeated Griswold in Guilford. Guilford was undefeated before stepping on the court with the Fitch Falcons, so we're very proud of our volleyball team.
Thank you, Addie.
Addie, could you give us a little update on the marching band?
Oh, yeah. So, marching band just went to states, I think, recently. Did very, very well, as the marching band always does, really good. And I don't know how many of you went, but there was the home, the home marching band event recently, the past week or so.
Sounds of the Sea.
Yes, Sounds of the Sea. Yep, and it was a great success, so.
The reason I ask is, one of the band's parents told me that, I guess it was this past weekend, I know of a score in the upper 70s is really good. The Fitch band scored 89 and won the state and New England championship. And now have been invited to the Nationals, which I think is held. But we'll get a fave to come in and give us the details.
And there's, on Facebook, there is actually a video of, actually, the school buses had a police escort coming home from the Nationals, so.
Talking about-
From New England.
New England, that's what I meant.
The Nationals are up and coming.
Nationals, there will be.
Homecoming, definitely.
For a bad reason.
All right, no, that's right. All right, thank you so much. All right. Rita?
Before you move on from Fitch High School, I wanted to congratulate the Fitch High School Boys Soccer Team, for the first time ever, winning the ECCs.
Ever.
Ever, 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 in the history of Fitch. I have two sons that played soccer, and I know the struggles, so anyway, I wanted to congratulate the Boys Soccer Team, and I wish them well in the tournament.
All right, and so the next up is Superintendent Administration Reports.
Well, I, almost everything that I've been doing lately has to do with Groton Middle School, so let me, let me start by saying that tomorrow I'll be meeting with a joint faculty of both, oh no, tomorrow, sorry. Tomorrow with the kids. Is that true? Or do I have my dates?
Tomorrow is-
Tomorrow is a joint faculty meeting.
Joint faculty meeting.
If I had the right notes here.
Yeah, and the next day is the kids.
Right, so tomorrow, both Fitch and, Fitch, both Cutler and Westside faculties are coming to Fitch, and we're, and I'm going to address them, and the principals are going to address them. And we're going to, we're going to basically launch a series of subcommittees that will be talking about all aspects of consolidation, everything from, from scheduling to how parents are going to be brought into, into the consolidation and so forth. And then the next day, all the 7th graders are coming to Fitch High School, and Amy Samuelson, who is the chief architect, is going to give them a kind of a virtual tour of the new building, and I will address them. They are, they will be, of course, the first 8th grade class at Groton Middle School, so we're, we're very excited about that. And weather permitting, although I don't think the weather is going to permit, we had planned, and we may have to postpone this, 30 students from Cutler and then 30 students from Westside are actually going to go onsite, and they're going to look at the facility and the site, and they're going to plan an outdoor classroom. And we continue to work on the schedule. We've, over the last couple of weeks now, a lot of really good work. We now have a team of about 14 people working on this, and teachers, and administrators, and some of our tech staff. It is a complex matter, but I think we're, we're making some really good progress. I think we're right on track for that, and things are, things are coming along pretty well as we proceed to the first quarter, I think. Right, Addie? The first quarter is coming up?
Yeah, it's ending this week, the first quarter.
I figured, November 1st is, we don't celebrate Halloween for nothing, that's when the grades come out.
All right, I'm going to move over to Susan Austin, our Assistant Superintendent.
And my topic is on professional development, and we've had three professional development opportunities this past month, where many of our teachers were able to participate and administrators, and then we always come back together again to chat about it and to really acknowledge our takeaways and to see what we can do to implement. These are all free of charge by the state of Connecticut and also by Teachers College, these three events. So I'm going to start with the Performance Matters, and I thought you might like to see the agenda, and I was going to speak to a couple of things that we were able to participate in. And the other was the Alliance District, and as one of the Alliance members, we're able to participate in a plethora of opportunities that they provide for us, free of charge. So I'm going to pass both items out to you. And I'm going to start telling you a little bit about Performance Matters. So we have people who attend, who run our power school, for instance, and are always collecting the data and making sure that it's accurate. We also had principals and assistant principals, we had teachers attend, and I always like to attend, so that I really get the most updated information. In that, some of the things that they talked about were the Connecticut Report Card, which I shared with our Board of Ed. They even had a workshop- They even had a workshop on mindset, a hidden factor impacting test results, which is really the importance of social emotional learning on our children, and how academic success of students is related to mindset of both staff and students. We also went to workshops on the state reporting, best practices and tips. The NGSS, of course, was, we've really just taken part in our first benchmark exam, so we did get results, the children got results, those were verified by the state. We're still waiting for the, to bring you the data, and they call it preliminary results, they don't even call it embargoed anymore, but they said in the preliminary results, it's a little premature to give it out to public until they have verified it and we know what the state results are, our DURB results. So those should be coming mid-November, and I look forward to presenting that to you. They also had, I guess they had a presentation on AP in Connecticut, and how they're looking to make more rigorous courses, and that the state is actually make, you know, charting and recognizing IB and AP for students for rigor. So, and when we got back, we really had a wonderful discussion about how we're using interim assessments, and I think it's really one of those best practice ways, so we felt pretty validated, that we use them as pre- and post-assessments in our teaching. We use them, teachers use them to mark their SLOs, which is their student learning objectives, to see that kids are making growth on these things. And they're also used for instruction, so teachers may use them like in a whole class setting, or put kids in think tanks and have them work together or pair. And sometimes they're done alone, and it's really a great practice model prior to the SBAC or the NGSS. So we found that kids go into the testing environment more comfortable, more self-assured, because they've had these experiences, and we've really tried to tie them in with instruction. Not as something separate that we just practiced for, like the week before, but really throughout the, the school. We do the same thing for SAT. So on unit assessments, we often have SBAC-type questions, K through 8, and we have the SAT-type questions in our high school for unit assessments. So the conversation was terrific. We also talked about the Alliance District. Matt Brown was able to join me in that, and we got a book called Creating Safe, Inequitable, Engaging Schools. And the presenter was Sandra Williamson, who actually was one of the authors and editors of the book. And really, the essence of this is setting up, creating a positive school climate and making sure that students have strong social emotional skills and feel physically and emotionally safe. That's really the importance in their school environment. And that they have, are connected and supported with another adult in the building, whether it's a teacher, a guidance counselor, it could be a principal or assistant principal. And these all seem like really common sense kinds of things, but I think it's really important to keep that as kind of our foundation, that that is really a very important piece of what we do. So we learned about the systemic approach, which is really like the pyramid we've seen with tier one, tier two, tier three, and Matt and I took a chance and wrote down all the things, we kind of self-analyzed how we're doing and what we have in place. And then the job was to identify areas that we might need support, whether it's through professional development or other resources needed, maybe even keeping track of kids who've had struggles in the past, you know, whether it's a piece of software or data collector. So we felt that was really a valuable morning to spend in Hartford. So, and I gave you this because I really made some copies of, there's an article here on multi-level systems of support for school mental health. It's through the Child Health and Development Institute, which is run by Jeff Vanderplu, Dr. Jeff Vanderplu, who was here for our Mental Health Summit, so a lot of good work comes from them. And then a busload of teachers and I went on a Saturday. We met at Central Office at 5:45, and we didn't get back till 6:15. I like to recognize our teachers, because they go way beyond the call of duty so many times. And we take the trip in the fall and in the spring. Teachers College opens their doors with all of these experts, you know, from the university, and there were about 140 workshops, thousands and thousands of teachers. It's the 97th reunion, they call it. And we started with keynote, Peter Reynolds, who wrote the book The Dot. And if you go through our elementary schools, you'll see a lot of dots, because our art teachers love that book. And it's, the whole essence of it is, it starts with a dot. So a little child said to her art teacher in this story, "Well, I'm not an artist, I can't draw," and she said it starts with a dot. So she made a dot, and she signed it, and the teacher hung it up. And then her dot, she had a plethora of dots, so she had a dot, you know, art show. And she just messed with colors and did her dot, and so I think it really recognizes that, you know, it can start with a dot, it can start with a word, and you become a writer, or you become an artist. So we really appreciate it. It was really, the whole essence of the Teachers College Day was around creativity and finding kids' strengths and finding their gifts and really, you know, inspiring them, so. And then, of course, one of my favorites is Mary Arnsworth, and Dr. Ackerman and I had seen her when we went on our trip, and she had a few different workshops on Planning for Grammar Instruction and Writing Workshop, Methods, Structures, and Progressions. So I was really excited about that. And she's written the book Grammar Matters, so. And then the last but not least is what's happening in Groton Public Schools for November 5th, and I thought you'd want to know that. So it is a regional PD Day, which means that we work with LEARN, and teachers from this whole southeastern Connecticut can come together, so a lot of our special area teachers, art, music, PE, and some of those are just a matter of teachers bringing other teachers together. So some of them ran and some didn't run, but you really see all the different opportunities. At Fitch, both middle school and high school teachers will be working on MYP assessment. The high school is very busy with NEASK, with MYP, with the IB diploma programs, and then a lot of curriculum work, so. And then also, the elementary teachers are working on finalizing report cards, and I look forward to bringing them to you in November, and bringing some of the teachers. We've had many teachers who were writing curriculum all summer, also writing the report card standards, and every teacher has had an opportunity to give feedback. As a matter of fact, Beth was saying that when they looked at some of the kindergarten report cards, she made sure that those really matched the standards. So we've had so many eyes on this that it really is, I think, a wonderful product. We've always had standard-based report cards, but by re-examining what the standards are and looking at, so what demonstrates a 1, 2, 3, 4, and having that calibration articulation, like we're going to do November 5th, and then what's the evidence that supports that, is just a powerful conversation, and I think we'll do much better by our students and our families, by giving them, you know, this new report. So, and then our paraprofessionals also have some wonderful things. Erin Genesek is going to do workshops on trauma and practices in the classroom. Our parents are the ones who are the, you know, right and left hand sometimes of our kids, supporting them, and so they've asked for more opportunities for this. And then also, you know, through the, the business office, we have, and I'm trying to remember his name, let's see, this Rob Wright from Workers Comp coming in to talk about therapeutic sensitivity of mindset. So that's really kind of the theme for them for the day. So, thank you.
So I guess you're really bored and doing very little for the district. This is amazing.
Well, Mike, you can share that. Through our Attendance Matters group, you have a little magnet.
Yes.
And it's, I wish it came out in September next year, maybe, you know, but it took us a while to really develop it. But for parents, you've seen the big signs at the school, so we've really followed through with our plan to make sure that parents realize how much attendance matters, you matter, your child matters, and it's always good to have a little reminder on the refrigerator. That's what I always say.
Nice job. Thank you so, thank you so much. Rita.
I just had a quick question. I noticed one of the sessions for the Department of State Education that you went to with Matt, they had AP in Connecticut, a state and district approach to expanding assets, and also the best practices in early childhood transition services. Could you share with the board, maybe in our packet, some information about that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. The nice thing about this, when you go, that they have all the slideshows and they have all the information, so if you can't go to one, sometimes we divide and conquer, so I did have a few teachers who went to both of these things. So we come back, we share, but then we have the slideshows too, so I'd be happy to.
And even the state technology resources and student success, I mean, all that would be wonderful to read about.
I would be happy to do that.
Thank you.
I even made copies for myself.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you?
Very good, how are you?
Good, so we are now on our Business Manager Report.
So, attachment number one will show that our current projected unexpended balance, $96,891, on our budget of $77,438. We're continuing to.
Yeah, we're moving up.
To follow budget pretty closely. We are getting in our out-of-district tuition bills as we speak, so hopefully we'll have that one updated for next month, and we can get a better idea where we are versus budget.
Any questions on this? All right.
And second attachment is our health insurance claims for the month of August. They came in at 93.5% of budget, and on a year-to-date basis, 90.2% of budget. This compares with last year, we're at 92.1, so we're a little bit ahead. Yep, through two months, it's, but those are pretty heavy months typically, so I think, I think we're, we're in good shape so far.
What did we end the year last year to the good?
Last year, it was around 95, 95.5, somewhere in that area.
Any other questions about the health? All right. So, Mr. Kilpatrick.
So, the update on Groton 2020. As you can all see, the progress continues over at the Groton Middle School, and as Dr. Grunier just mentioned, the 7th graders will be making a visit on Wednesday morning, and hopefully the weather will hold off and the kids will get to actually walk the site in the afternoon, at least, not all the 7th graders, but a special group of them would go over and take a look at the school itself. The second thing is the elementary schools. We are planning to go to the, to the state on November 26th and 27th, and that would, we'll be looking for the approval from the state to go out to bid on those two projects.
It just seems so unbelievable.
There's some data in there, though, that they're going to need the board to sign off on, on the, Rick was explaining.
I haven't seen that one yet, so.
Okay. Well, I'm not even exactly sure, is it the bid specs that the board would want to sign off on?
Ed specs.
The ed specs are all done, and the bid specs aren't out yet, so it would be just the forms that would be necessary to go to the state to ask permission.
Authorizing the forms. So we might have, have to have a very quick board meeting, because I know we're going on the 26th and the 27th. This is where the architect really goes through it with a fine-tooth comb, to be sure that the plans align with the ed specs and that the whole thing is within projected budget. Thanks.
Rita.
Oh, I just wanted to ask, you had an update about the water at the schools, and if anything, it's being done.
Well, one of the things, the state came out with a recommendation to all schools in the state of Connecticut to flush the water after long weekends and holidays, so that is being, that's actually being done by our custodians and maintenance personnel, has been since just about the beginning of school, I can't remember the exact date that it came out. So that has, that's been taking place. We're still waiting to set up a meeting to go back to the state and talk about a full plan of how to move forward on this whole project.
So are you waiting because the state has to give you a date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I know that you attend, or are you considered a member of the Permanent School Committee?
I'm not a member, but I attend all the.
Okay, so I'm assured that there's a process of understanding about fields, specifically with either the closed schools or the new, newly constructed, and it seems that, you know, I'm not just hearing from tonight, but I'm hearing from other people about the concerns about the fields, and so I'm just wondering if that group could have some communication about that, because I know it's part of the plan.
I can, I can make sure that it gets on the next agenda.
I appreciate that.
Of our next meeting, and that would have to be something the Permanent School Building Committee, those persons would speak to the architects about and see whether some changes could be made.
Well, I also, I'm hoping that this is in conversation with the Park and Recs, who also use the field as well, and so, I mean, I would, I would hope that there is like.
Parks and Rec did submit a list of concerns and requests for all the projects previously, so they've been in contact with the Permanent School Building Committee right along.
And, and I guess maybe, I'm talking off the top of my head, which I know is a dangerous thing sometimes, but maybe the athletic director should also be part of those conversations so that he can also.
He has been as well, yes.
Okay. Once again, I'm assured that this is happening, but when, when, as we know, when there's a lack of communication, like then people tend to not know what's kind of going on and then speculate, so I think that the more the, you know, the more that that is knowledge out there, I think that the better people are in making decisions. All right.
Makes sense.
All right, I don't know if that sentence made sense, so I'm just going to go with it. Any other questions for the Director and Gans? All right, we're going to move on. So Committee Reports, policy. I know that we're going to be talking about some.
We have a second meeting.
Okay.
In addition, last, last policy meeting was still in September, because instead of being at the beginning of October, but we continued to meet, and we're there.
You know, it's really cool, if you go on the district website, you can pull up all the policies.
Oh, yes.
It is just so much fun.
And it's incredible.
I was trying to do that.
And the index is great, too.
Yeah.
All right, and curriculum?
Yep, with Mrs. McKenna, and she reviewed for a final time the proposed courses that are going to come before you this evening, and the Curriculum Committee is recommending that you approve all of them. Thank you.
Finance and Facilities?
We basically discussed the fiscal year 2021 CIP recommendations, which we will review later in this meeting.
Super. And negotiations, we have finished, but, and I know, actually, that's on our schedule for the possible executive session, but that contract is not ready, so actually, we will not be having that, but we are done with that piece of negotiations, and I don't think that there's anything.
It literally hasn't been printed quite yet, I, well, it's not me, but we apologize for the delay, but no big deal, there's no problem, it's just getting it through the lawyers.
All right. Rita, LEARN?
We met, the board meeting, the regular board meeting was October 10th, and the highlight was Dr. Grunier coming to speak to the LEARN board. He, his presentation focused on coordinating and everything to do with the two middle schools becoming one. So, anyway, it was, it was very well received, and people afterwards said to me how lucky we are in Groton to have Dr. Grunier as our superintendent. They were very other, were very impressed, Dr. Grunier.
Well, thank you.
We also had the Associate Executive Director, Dr. Ryland Donlin, who presented their school data. They discussed, we also discussed, let's see, that Dr. Lee Tidal of Harvard, who was going to be facilitating a number of workshops at LEARN on equity, which I thought maybe some of our students, I mean, our teachers would be interested in attending. Let's see, what else did we think, was something else that we did? Oh, yes, our roundtable discussion was on vaping and cyber threats in schools, and that was very, very interesting, and it'll be ongoing as something we're going to continue to do and provide more information with IT departments, I think, I think. And then I had an executive meeting last Friday. And then I had an executive meeting last Friday.
That's it. Thank you, Rita. At the beginning of the month, we had the Board of Ed, Town Council, RTM, and City Council. We need to add the City Council to that heading, if you could do that.
TCC.
Well, there's the Town Council, and then there's also the City Council, the Groton City Council. Represent both? That's what that was.
Town?
Well, you know.
Council, city.
I don't know how many years I have to be a board member before I recognize that, but
Well, that's new.
All right. Being clever. All right, and we did meet, and actually this discussions that were happening was a lot around the charter and the grant proposals. And, and really, if you have anything more to add, I
I have nothing to add.
Okay, right. They are great meetings, please don't get me wrong.
Yes, it was a very good meeting.
It just, it just happens that life gets so fast in between those two, and I need to take better notes. We also will have a liaison meeting with the AJSA and the GEA, and that will be this coming Wednesday at four-thirty, correct?
Right.
All right. And then trails and Groton scholarships?
Trails, we'll be excited to find out about the wilderness English class, the wilderness literature. They'll be very, very excited to hear about that and maybe even participate in it. And scholarship is status quo. We really don't change month, 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 week to week.
All right.
Except for they forget to tell me they're when they're not having a meeting.
Okay. All right, so we're going to move on to the action items, and this is the consent agenda, where all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion, where we will allow for points of clarification. Can I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? I have the motion made by Katrina and seconded by Gretchen. Can I have any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there anything we can do about the amount of paper we're using here? When we, all of us who are on the Board of Ed have already gotten that before, so would it be okay if we don't have all of this over again? Is there any way?
So could we just have the, am I hearing correctly, if we could just have the minutes and not necessarily all the supplements?
Because we already have this.
Right.
Yeah.
It can all send out by email as well. But there are some of our members who requested it in part copy, so
I think, I think you're just talking about the minutes, though.
No, I, I think the minutes are fine. I just wonder because
She's just wondering, but all the supplemental information that comes by the, by the minutes.
In fact, we all have that.
Yeah.
And everyone had it sent to them, either by email or per talk.
Jay?
We won't do the enclosures.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I just simply opt out of the paper, and anyone can do that. You just read it on your iPad.
I can do that, too.
And I did that years ago.
I feel the same way.
Yeah, so that cuts down the paper.
But if we didn't have to have it at the Board of Ed meeting.
We'll cut out the enclosure.
Yes, it's great.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Did we approve them yet?
Nope, I'm still in discussion.
Oh, yes, I had one, the meeting that we attended on September sixteenth. I actually attended that meeting, I was late. So that is on September, that was when we had our discussion with Isabel Stevenson.
That'll show you.
So I'd like to amend that, those minutes.
Can we have that amended?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so I will, now with, that's points of clarification, right? So we've already cleared that. So all those, so I can just ask for a motion. So all those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with the points of clarification, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, the motion has carried. The board would like to say thank you to Chelsea Groton Foundation, has made a donation on behalf of the Chella Patel as part of the 2019 Acts of Kindness Initiative to the Cutler Arts and Humanities Magnet School, Magnet School. Your Cause LLC trustee for Wells Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Grants Program has made a donation of a hundred and forty dollars to Claude Chester School, and that is through Michelle Ezell Atkins, and if I'm pronouncing your names wrong, I apologize. And then also for Your Cause LLC trustee for Wells Fargo Foundation Educational Matching Grant Program for a hundred and forty dollars to Claude Chester School through the same person, Michelle Ezell Atkins. Atkins, sorry. All right, so as I had suggested, we are going to move into our agenda to number five, which is to hear the curriculum. And so I believe that we have some folks here, and so I don't know if you wanted to kind of, kind of come up. Would that be best, Susan? How, how should they handle that?
I think that Dr. Ackerman and the team can kind of work us through. I think you have a packet in front of you that has the courses, and the board, remember, had had the teachers there and the administrators, and they're here if we have any questions for them. But, you know, we had had the full, the full COW had really paid attention to the brief version, but now you have the curriculum mass in front of you of each of the different areas.
It's just really amazing.
It is amazing.
It's just really amazing.
So I think the attachment, the first attachment was the shortened version that you all had to see, and then when we said, off you go writers, they did, and they wrote up the courses.
So, so we're right on track that if the board approves these courses, then we'll go back to the high school. It will be those courses that you approve will be incorporated into the program of studies. The students will have access to that in January, February, and then the courses will, those you approve will be taught in the fall. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a long process and tedious process, but the board, the committee looked at it initially, the board looked at it as COW, the teachers spent a great deal of time writing and creating these curricular documents. So we're, we're, we're right on this, this really eighteen-month track to put it into the program of studies appropriately.
And I would like to do a shout-out, though, for our, our English Language Arts, you know, department, that they really recognized that kids, they wanted to involve kids in half-credit courses so that they would really love reading and writing even more, and, you know, listening to the children and, and seeing what some of the newer opportunities were in the area, what are the things that they want to read, what's going to help support them, including, you know, the actual Yukon Writing Center, which teachers have gone to professional development up at Yukon stores to find out more about how we can train our kids to do some peer support and mentoring. And that can last a whole year, so it's a two-part series where they actually get trained, and then they actually are part of the Writing Center supporting one another. So it's just, you know, amazing work. And I do believe they will want to sign up for these courses, and it will make them better readers and writers, because they're going to be reading more and writing more about things they want.
I would like to add that we've had rich, long discussions and conversations about the content of the curriculum. And I have to say that in the beginning, there was, there was a particular course that I was not in favor, but
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know that.
However, it was duly defended, and I'm a hundred percent behind it. And I just wanted to congratulate Mrs. McKenna and all of her coworkers, her colleagues, who came up with the documents. They are just so, they're moving, they're so beautifully done. And I, I'm hoping that if you have something else that you'd like to say, that you, that you take this advantage, advantage of this moment. No, she says no.
So what I am going to do, before we go into any further discussion, I do, I do hear you, Gretchen, is I do would like to have a motion on, and Katrina, and I'm just wondering if you'd be willing to read, that you'd like to make a motion to accept, to approve the following courses, and if you could just list them, and so that we can get that on the books before Ms. Joan thinks I'm silly.
So it'll be a motion, number five. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following courses, wilderness literature, graphic novels, gaming narratives, fantasy and science fiction, sports literature, oral communication two, the Writing Center Theory Practice and Internship.
Can I have a second? And Andrea has had the second? Now let's continue on with our discussion. We already got it. Gretchen?
Throughout this entire thing, I still do not understand the graphic novels, so when this is brought to the table, if, I will not be voting for it. The entire package, if it's a class, because I don't get it yet. And I think my getting it is really important towards moving forward with the program.
Okay.
Otherwise, the rest of it is great. I love most of these, I really like most of them. I love many of them, but I don't understand that one.
Okay.
So I just need more, I don't know, I don't know if I need to sit with the teacher and have him explain to me, or play with me.
Just, just a, just a note on that, Dr. Ackerman met with Ms. McKenna, and I would encourage you to reach out to her, because it's, it was the one book, one region, I think Heikido moved a lot of us. I know More Than Words, many of the More Than Words students, we had, we had that as a text that we dealt with. But I, I don't want to promise Ms. McKenna's time, but
Well, and I know that Ms. McKenna has actually come to the board committee, to the curriculum council. I think she's probably in support of these courses from the conception of time, has probably met with us about five or six times to help explain.
I do want, I do, I do want to respect the fact that Gretchen is saying she doesn't make that
It is not that I haven't done the research. I came in one night with a pile of six or seven graphic novels
I support that.
From many genres, and was like, this is actually exciting, and we could teach Beowulf and Poe and all these other things with graphic novels. I, I just don't, this one, I just, it's not clicking. Maybe it's the dyslexic child in me.
That's all right, I really appreciate your being able to say that, and, but once again, you already, you, you have the resources and you've heard, so, and I, I appreciate, sorry, let me try the sentence one more time. I appreciate the comment, your comments. Is there any other discussion?
I had a question.
Yeah, and then
I would like to audit sports literature.
Can I do that?
Yeah. All right.
I think so. My question was about the sports literature course, awesome, and I was a little confused. Unit one is ten weeks, and then the unit two, I believe, is like different. It's, it's, no, one was fourteen weeks and one was six weeks, so they're just, it's just sectioned off. I just couldn't quite understand how it was being presented. If a student could take, is it, is that a whole semester? Do students take one part and then another, or is it all one? I, I just couldn't figure it out reading this. But that's just me.
These are all half-credit courses to be taken in a semester.
One semester.
One semester course.
One semester. So the one that says, part one, unit two, six weeks, is a separate section, or is just all included in the half-credit course?
So each of these units adds up to the whole course, so they're not necessarily in equal parts. You might have different amounts of time spent in different units. Am I speaking correctly?
Is that it?
Yeah.
But they're twenty weeks long, most of them?
About sixteen.
Yes?
I think it's usually sixteen weeks.
It was just fun to read this, and I want to say thank you very much
A lot of work.
To the staff in the English department. This is just, it was fun, and I just really wish that I was a high school student.
Twenty. Yeah, I agree.
Rita?
I just wanted to let Gretchen know that I believe the graphic novels was presented about eight years ago also, and it's taken me a while to get there. So, you know, you may get there, but it's been present, proposed for quite a long time now, and now I understand it, so.
Well, now that I saw that it can be more than just a coloring book.
Oh, yeah, much more, yeah.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of passing the motion to approve the following courses, wilderness literature, graphic novels, gaming narratives, fantasy and science fiction, sports literature, oral communication two, the Writing Center Theory Practice and Internship, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, abstain? The motion has
Understanding that it's one class.
So the motion has carried. So you now have this to add to the catalog.
Thank you. We appreciate all the hard work.
All right.
I, I also want to thank the board, because we've come here a couple of times, and we said we didn't have enough time to do this the way we wished we could have, and you were nice enough through NYPD courses, for example, to get it on the docket. But the, the staff and the administration have done a super job here. So this is really the way that, it's the first time in my six years that we've done this really properly, so my hat's off to you guys. Excellent work, thank you.
I just wanted to emphasize for those who may be watching at home at some point that this is now at what, an eighteen-month process, which is involved hours of work on behalf of the faculty, the curriculum council, Susan, the curriculum committee. It seems to happen fast here on camera, but we've received reams of information, either in paper or on our iPad, to, to study this very carefully, but all this work has been done. I don't know how many hours has been spent sorting through all this.
Thank you, Jay, that's a good point.
One more thing. I think that what kept us on track is the timeline that Susan came up with, and I think you were part of that as well.
Well, and, and, and you did it, so it's terrific.
Well, no, again, Susan.
All right, so we're, I'm going to move us on. Gretchen? We are going to go back to the new business portion. And number C, would you please be willing to open up with a motion for number one?
The motion to approve the FY twenty-one CIP.
Can I have a second? Oh, my goodness.
These poor people are sitting here thinking.
All right. So I'm going to, I'm not, I didn't get a vote on that. So Gretchen?
Do you want me to do it again?
No, what I would like you to do is old business, because I've led you wrong.
Old business, number one?
Yes.
The motion, yes.
Discussion and possible action regarding a school reading of policy P six-one-four-six, graduation requirements, attachment number six.
So the motion is to approve as a second reading of policy P six-one-four-six, graduation requirements. Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, just about everyone wanted a second, and so, all right. And the discussion to this is, it's great.
My first question is on page three of nine at the bottom, where it talks about approval from the high school administration to take course, the course to be eligible to receive the credit. And I would like that to say, principal, I would hate to see, speaking as a principal, I would hate to see something approved that I didn't, I didn't have firsthand say in that, because
Do you have it in front of you? Okay. Do you have it, Matt? Okay.
And, you know, I trust our administration now. You don't know what's going to happen in the future forever, and I think the principal should have the last say, and not just that vague high school administration.
So you would change administration?
Paragraf at that point, I didn't know.
It's the footnote at the bottom.
Oh, the footnote.
Change administration to principal.
Could we do it by paragraph over talking about the
Sure. It's the note on the bottom of page three, about the third line down, take out administration and put in principal.
I have three others. On, on the page five of nine, under Connecticut Seal of Biliteracy, I, I see that including American Sign Language is not in there specifically, and I think it should be.
Now, I don't know that there is a seal of biliteracy for that.
I thought we included that.
It's, it's a world language that's accepted, but I don't know that the Seal of Biliteracy program
Oh.
Has a test for American Sign Language.
Okay, I was wrong.
And if it, if it does, but I'm getting clear body language that it does not, we certainly would include it, but, but I think you're right. You, you have to, it's oral proficiency. Well, it's more than oral, it's written and oral. You have to, it's oral proficiency. Well, it's more than oral. It's written and oral.
Well, how is it that we're recognizing it then?
It's accepted certainly by the International Baccalaureate and for Carnegie and for graduation credits. But there is simply not a test of biliteracy that we could put a seal.
Okay, I withdraw that. And then I had a question, a very top vision of the graduate. I don't know what that's doing in policy. It talks about something yet to come. I don't know why it's in policy.
It's a tentative statement.
Yeah, but if we're, I'm sorry.
It's, yeah, you're right. It's coming. And that's a NEAS thing. It doesn't necessarily have to be in policy. We're just doing it. So we could strike the vision. It is, you're right. It's not integral to the policy.
Well, I'm, is that true, Erin, that do we, don't we have to include the vision of the graduate as part of our graduation requirements? Okay, so.
We may have to, but not in policy.
We have to do it for NEAS, but unless it says the.
No, it's the new regulations.
But if it's not done yet, I mean, I guess we can hold off and then just put it in when it is complete.
I don't see putting a vision of something in the policy state, in the policy itself. Maybe I'm incorrect. I could be.
We'll go back and look at that.
And the last one, a question I have is.
Could we agree, we're going to check on NEAS. If NEAS says it has to be in the policy, we'll come back. If it doesn't, we'll just do it because it's, that's an essential element of NEAS. Does that seem reasonable?
And it might be part of the law, so I just want to make sure.
I think it's part of the new law.
We think it could be part of the law. Okay.
But then we should do it when we do it, not.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah.
Once the policy's written.
Yes. Okay, and the last one is, and I'm not sure if this is state statute or not, but number five at the very bottom of awards and high school diplomas.
Where is this?
Same page, five to nine, number five.
Number five, okay.
It says a student who is under suspension, I'm sorry, under expulsion from the high school can graduate. How is a student, now unless it's state statute that says that.
Well.
If he's under, under expulsion, how is he going to graduate?
Well, when a student is expelled, he's excluded from school, but we continue to provide educational services. So many students, I'd say most students, actually graduate. That is to say, they complete their high school requirements, but they're expelled, so they can't come to. They can't come on school property.
I understand the, I understand the concept of providing education. I just don't understand how if a student, if he's off expulsion, that's a different story. If he's completed his, but if he's under expulsion, how does he graduate?
Well, he doesn't, he could, because we provide, you have to provide four hours a day of tutoring.
I understand.
So let's say a senior who gets expelled the last few months of high school, they finish off their educational requirements, they therefore complete their high school credits and would be awarded a diploma.
Wouldn't they be out of the concept of expulsion at that time? That's my.
Right, once they finish.
That's what I'm talking about. Maybe we could have this go back and re looked at again.
So a senior who gets expelled in May finishes his or her diploma requirements.
And is finished with expulsion.
Well, once they finish their diploma, they're finished with expulsion. That's true.
Right, but that's not what this says.
So what is your issue? Can you just help me out? Like, what is your, what is your concern?
If a student is expelled, if his expulsion is over, then I understand that he can graduate. Let's say his expulsion isn't over till next September. Do we go back?
Well, the expulsion, right. The expulsion ends by definition when they finish their high school courses. But this provision, it's very clear, and I appreciate what they've written here. Because sometimes students finish their work and then they say they want to participate, they want to participate in high school ceremonies. And that's the good part about that.
Yeah, I understand that.
I think this language was in the K policy, but was in many, many other new policies on graduation. Everybody's doing this now because of the new state law and what's going to go into effect in another year or so. So I think that the committee that worked on this at Fitch noticed that this was the language that had been in all of these different.
I think Erin has something.
Can I actually call Erin to the podium so that you can address this issue? Thank you, Erin.
I just want to point out, it was in our old graduation policy as well. It was, it's just part of the language of many of the policies, so I just wanted to point that out.
So there's no change?
There's no change, but I will say, because I've dealt with this many times, some parents say, well, my child's completed the high school courses. I now want him or her to participate, even though the expulsion could have been for something quite grave. So the idea is that they would be excluded from graduation. That's the important part as far as we're concerned.
Gretchen?
What's the difference between suspension and expulsion? And my growing up view and adult view is that they're both punishments, especially expulsion, which meant you needed to go find someplace else to learn.
No, expulsion means to be excluded from school for more than 10 days.
Excluded for more than 10 days, okay.
Or less than.
Part B is if the child is over 16 and is an unwilling learner, do we, and we expel them, do we have to provide a tutor?
We do, by law.
If they say, I don't want a tutor, I'm done?
So I want to just be careful that we're now talking about something besides what's on the floor right now, which is that policy.
We're just following the law.
Okay, I'm just trying to figure out what has changed in the law since the last time I took a serious look at it, which was probably two decades ago.
No, the answer.
Katrina?
Would Mrs. Ackerman be satisfied if instead of, who is under, a student who is under expulsion, if it was written, a student who has been expelled?
I would.
Yeah.
I would, that would.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, I don't want to say that because somebody could have expelled one of their sophomores, and they come back after a year.
But this wouldn't apply to them.
I'm sorry?
This wouldn't apply anyway. If they came back, they wouldn't be under expulsion anymore.
But you just said if they had been expelled. See, under expulsion is, it's during those last few months. We wanted to say that. And this unfortunately happens more often than you know.
Can you add that?
A student who has been under expulsion during the last, the last part of his senior year.
Sure. Yeah, that's what we mean. Yeah, a student who's under.
Would that meet the high school's need? Lee, I got you. Would that meet the high school's need if we added that phrase, which is a student who's under expulsion from Fitch High School in the latter part of his.
In the latter part of his high school career.
No, in the latter part of his senior year.
Yeah, in the latter part of his senior year, sure. That's what we mean.
But has satisfactory completed all the graduation requirements, shall receive a diploma. However, they cannot attend.
In the.
Here's my concern. I know that there are times when a student is expelled and they're not allowed to come back to school until next September. That's my.
That's right.
So do the undergraduates.
But see, it doesn't say.
Right.
Right.
I'm happy with that new language.
And actually, not to complicate things, but when a student successfully graduates from high school, his expulsion is expunged by law.
Yes, yes.
Lee, the one thing that I'm thinking about is the student who for some reason has been expelled.
Yes.
That person is, he or she has the rest of her life she needs or he needs a diploma.
Right.
Because he's going to apply or she's going to apply for a job.
Yes.
And where the question says, do you, have you graduated from the high school? If the answer is no, that person isn't going to get a job.
That's a good point.
That's where the expunging comes in, because the student has a huge incentive because he wasn't, or she wasn't expelled if it's expunged.
All right. Is there other, did you have other concerns? Gretchen, do you have anything to the policy?
No. Well, I'm just wondering how it read on college transcripts.
But that's another, that's another. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right.
I caught myself.
Thank you.
It's there.
Okay, so what we're going to. So are people comfortable with page number three? Changing from administration to principal?
Yes.
Scratching for the present moment vision of the graduate until we hear more information about that. And that number five, changing a student who is under expulsion from Fitch High School and at the end of senior year?
Latter part.
Latter part of, latter part.
In the latter part of the senior year.
That can go back to the committee for.
Yeah, what, hey, that's what we mean. Right?
I just want to confirm that this wasn't verbatim from the state or from cave language. So I would have to just get clarification on that, because some of these are directly that we had to sort of use the verbatim, so.
I have a concern about the vision of the graduate. I don't think that should be scratched until we find out what the state.
So I'm thinking that this, that this needs to go back to policy. That we have too many, we have too many questions about this. When does, when did the high school need it?
Well, here's, here's the problem. Everything is great for sophomores, juniors, seniors. These regulations kick in for the freshmen, the current freshmen. So we need to promulgate these, and we're already, I predict like next week is going to be November. So we need to get these things out because the freshmen are living by these. This is the law. Well, they didn't get promulgated from the State Board event until fairly recently.
Yeah, I mean, so I think that we were only responding as quickly as the state has given it to us. So I don't feel like it's been under someone's desk pile here. Okay, so, Jake?
So I'm concerned that the Policy Committee has spent a great deal of time writing this. This is now the second reading.
Yes, it is.
None of these issues were brought up. These are, this is existing language, and I really don't think it's appropriate for us to rework it on the fly. So I say we vote on it up or down as it is, and if something really critical goes up, we can amend it. But the Policy Committee has spent countless hours on this, and no one raised any of these objections to language that's been on the book since, I'm not sure. And I don't think we should be fiddling with it.
No, this is the second reading.
But she said that the, that whole section about the expelled students is not new language.
I'm sorry.
The, when we have the complete vision of the graduate, the state is, and NEAS is asking that it be contained within the graduation policy. It is not complete at this point, and so I do not believe that there's any problem with taking this out until it is actually, there is something that we can substantiate in the policy.
Okay, thank you.
But the other elements are very important that the freshmen know this as soon as possible.
I'm going to do Rosemary and then Jay.
I'm just curious, is this legalese we're arguing about that? Doesn't our commitment to the student end when they complete the graduation? And is it that, the legalese kind of thing?
Well, they changed the law. So for example, world language.
Right, and that I got.
So it's really the components. It's just that first page, these are, well, the first page, it's the same. It's when you get to the second page, where you see the class of 2023, those are quite different. And we need, we need to promulgate those. Erin?
And just one more thing, the number five for that, again, this has been in our policy prior, and unfortunately, we have had situations where we had to sort of honor that number, and it hasn't been an issue as far as language goes in the past, so I just wanted to present that as well.
Jay?
So if the vision of the graduate is something that is ultimately required, I'm not sure why we have to bring it back again. Why can't we just accept this as it is, just like we do with policies where regulations are written at a later time? Let the high school go forward with the policy as written, and then they will draft the vision of the graduate.
Right, and add to the regulation.
It becomes similar to the regulation, but when are we going to bring this back again? With all the things we have on our plate, how many times is this going to come back to us so we can add, subtract? A great deal of time has been spent by our professional administration, our committee, to create this document, and I'm not comfortable fiddling with it on the fly.
I have to apologize because this is really the first time I've seen this. I thought this was the first reading. And I would be satisfied with, if we could amend it to say principal instead of.
Right.
Yeah, principal instead of administration. Well, we could amend it.
I appreciate what you say, Jake. A little minor wordsmithing is not a problem. We can come back with the vision of the graduate, but my recommendation is that the board vote on this so that we could put this in the hands of the ninth grade students.
All right, so we have a, so do I need to give an amendment to the motion? Okay, okay, so can I have a second to the amendment, which is just a change administration to principal? Did Gretchen, I think, she was in my visual field. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to prove for the second reading as amended, correct? Okay, so the, so I go backwards, though, or do I go forward? Okay, backwards. I shouldn't be able to do that very well. All right, so the motion is for the amendment of the policy, the second reading of the policy of graduation, and that is P 6146, graduation requirements, right? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried. Okay, so that now, I have to even say that one even though this one's passed? Okay, so now the main motion to accept the policy, thank you, Ms. Jones, to accept the policy P 6146, graduation as amended, you say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, assumptions, the motion has carried. Thank you, guys. Someday I'm going to grow up painful. Jay? Would you be willing to read under new business, number? The motion for number one?
Number one?
Yes, please.
I move to approve the fiscal year 2021 CIP recommendations.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Rosemary. All right. So Jay, Dr. Gwinier, do you want to kind of lead the conversation?
Well, let me, let me just, the board received the overview, which was the FY 21, and I'll just give you a really a quick lowdown, and then I'll show you what we did with the more formal. And this is all kind of tentative to what the board hopes to achieve. We, Sam's done some research, and we need to re sod and re crown the football field. It's not draining properly, and the suggestion is to include irrigation with that. So that whole project would be $200,000. The Northeast Academy study that was done by Fosson O'Neil included several elements. One of the elements was some short-term repairing, upgrading actually, of existing equipment. They also, they also suggested some site improvements, curtain drains and so forth to divert the water. And then ultimately, the replacement of the air handling units, which are on the roof. They're about $200,000 apiece. So over, over a four-year period, is it four, no, it's a five-year period. So, but what we talked about was taking the first step. Sam has, and his crew have done dehumidification through our, a program that we have through our HVAC system. And that has largely reduced the level of humidity significantly, but we. And that has largely reduced the, the level of humidity significantly, but we, we still want to be cautious. So we think that the upgrading of the equipment would be a, a wise prudent step for next year. And then the site improvements, we, we want to see how well the dehumidification project works and the, and the upgrading of the equipment. And then we'll see where we are. And then maybe for FY 22, we, we perhaps would consider the site improvements and, and potentially replacement of the air handling units. But for this year, just, just the, the short term. We have, we have four portables that we also are thinking about. The Pleasant Valley, there's one more portable at Pleasant Valley that we'd like to move to Charles Barnum. There's one, there, there's two, excuse me, at, at Cutler. And, and, and Sam has come up with a kind of an ingenious solution of moving them onsite, putting them up on blocks and using it as a construction trailer, at, at least for the next year. Moving them to the central office, for example, would be quite expensive. But we think we can move each of the two at, at Cutler for about $25,000 each and then moving the one at, at West Side on the side of the property, again, to be used as a trailer. It may be possible they could stay there and that it would be permanent storage for us, which would be, which would be great. And then lastly, and this is, this is my recommendation, Sam's recommendation and, and at least initially the committees. The idea at one point was that SB Butler would be retained by the board to be used as a, perhaps a STEM education center. We know that would cost about $750,000 and, and I, I for one, looking at the big picture of the town, I, I didn't see the town. Now, I'll just take it myself personally, I didn't see the town investing $750,000. For a facility, that's, that's not going to be a school. So what we, so what we did today, this is a little bit more detailed. I, again, here's the football field with the narrative of the football field and I, I literally penciled in because I didn't know what the board was hoping to accomplish, so that was, you, you see where it says a, a football field, lacrosse field. The next page is the, is the Charles Barnum, Cutler, West Side, $125,000 to move those portables. The, the PV one permanently to Butler, uh, Barnum and the two West Side, the two Cutler and the one West Side to be used as, as construction trailers. Northeast Academy, it's a little more complex. What I'm recommending and the committee recommended was $104,000 to do the short-term, immediate improvement of the existing equipment and for $104,000. And then in FY 22, do the, if need be, the construction, the, the site work and to move, replace one of the existing, or two actually of the existing, and air handling units and then so forth and so on until we get to where we need to go. And then the last one is to, last page there is to the idea of using Butler as, as a STEM education center, which would be great, but I'm just not sure $750,000 is priced down.
Jake? And then Gretchen?
I, I can't imagine too many people are going to find it controversial that we want to re sod and re crown the field. I think there's at least one person in the audience, or maybe she's left.
I think she left.
Who would agree with me that we've been asking this for how many years? And it continues to deteriorate and could become a safety issue.
Right.
And so I, I highly support that. The NEA situation, you know, I, I personally, I, I, I want everybody to understand, we're not voting on these subsequent years tonight. I'm very skeptical of sinking this much money into a new school for, until we determine whether what they're already doing is helpful. I'm not even sure about the $104,000. I guess what we're, what I propose we're doing tonight is creating placeholders for, because it's required that we have something in there.
Right.
But we may rethink even, even these things. And I'm very concerned about these portables. I would like the architects to point at a spot where they can be moved and stay. We are under the gun because we're required by state law to maintain student records for 50 years. A lot of these records are in a building which we are losing and the town is unwilling to convey that, that small parcel to us to maintain it, which would cost nothing. So we're now faced with an expensive alternative. This would be great, but I, I don't want them moved and then moved again because next year we're going to be coming back for another couple hundred thousand. So I would hope they could determine where can these go, you know, once and for all. We don't want this to be the Nathan Hale school of Groton that moves four or five cars. So anyway, I just consider these placeholders except the football field.
Okay. Gretchen?
Yeah, you say equipment and I'm just kind of curious as to exactly.
Can you weigh in on that a little bit?
What?
The upgrading of the existing equipment?
Yeah, it would actually be doing some adjustments and recalibration along with a couple of minor repairs on the HVAC systems that are on the roof of the building. There's 10 units on the building.
Do you want to explain a little bit about what your staff has been able to do on the dehumidification? Which actually is going pretty well and worked pretty well this summer. And maybe a little bit about the carpet business?
Yeah, so we, we have a consultant that we work with, a contractor that comes in and works with our technician, our, within our staff. Jamie Anderson is our DDC person, computer person with regard to HVAC systems. And the contractor and he got together, we, and we have put in a process that's called active dehumidification. And so what this does, the, the equipment that is on that building, I'm told is not, was not designed to dehumidify the air. And what happens is it takes it out of the building, comes back and it goes back into the building again. So this active dehumidification actually dries the air out as it's coming through and puts it back into the building drier than it was when it came out. So we've been doing that for, well, we did it in one section of the building that was our, of our highest concern, just to see if we thought it might work. It worked pretty well there, we thought, so the entire building is now on this. And so we want to follow that and, and continue looking at the trends and see whether this continues. One of the other things that we did, one of the classrooms that had the biggest concern had, had carpet in there and the, they're pretty young kids and so they sit on the carpet when they're doing their reading and, and things. And kids would get up and feel a little damp or something. We actually had one of our maintenance guys go in that room a while back before this, before we did this change and he walked into the room, went over to the other side of the room to check something on the opposite side of the room. When he came back, his shoes squeaked on the tile floor as he came back. So there was some humidity in the carpet. And so in that room, this past summer, we took the carpet out and the teacher is quite happy that that happened. The other thing that we did over the summer was, one of the first things that was recommended in the Fussin O'Neil report was to clean the, all the ductwork in the building. And so we hired dependable ductwork from the other end of the state. They came up and, and cleaned all the ductwork for us. So again, the staff was pretty pleased with that so far, so everything's, at this point, I would say that the active dehumidification looks like it's working. We're, we're checking on a daily basis and we want to continue to look at it and see how, how it plays out.
So to, to go to Jake's point, we could ride this out for, for another few months and, and by the time the town council is actively considering it, we, we might be able to say, it was a placeholder, the, the active dehumidification process is, is going forward and, and, you know, knock wood, so far so good. But I think you're right. The portables are extremely important, those are, those are valuable buildings. And, and I think, and I, I agree with you about the football field. It's, it's been, it's been a problem for a while.
Can I, oh, okay.
I, I'm just going to ask, the alternative to, to replacing the building we're losing would cost? Do we have an estimate? If we didn't use these?
We, we had a previous estimate in the $300,000 range.
So we're going to take a, we're going to take a three-second minute.
Sorry, we're, we're back on.
Want to ask it again?
Yeah.
Yeah, so how much would it cost to build a facility like the A-frame?
We, we had an estimate of between three and $400,000 and that would be dependent upon what the, the site was actually like. That would be considering a, a flat level site, previous. So the more inclined there might be, it may cost you more in, in site work, that sort of thing, but it was in that range.
Rita and then Gretchen?
My question is whether or not the air handling units that are on top of the building, would they also have to be replaced at, at the Konaski School? I mean, they were built the same time and why would they be replaced at Northeast? I mean, would it, is it, you know, and not at the, they're not having the same issues there?
One of, one of the statements by the Fussin O'Neil engineers was that these units are designed to have a life expectancy of 15 years.
So then we could run into the same thing at the Konaski?
I don't think any school system in, in the state can have, probably not in this country, expects their equipment to only last 15 years and that's why we have preventive maintenance working on it. And I, I think they take that into consideration, but that's what, that, that's, that was their statement. So that's not a very good picture and a very good thought, for sure.
And then I had one more question about the, to use one of our schools that we're going to be vacating for the Groton STEM Education Center, could, could we ever use Claude Chester for that? Would it be as expensive if you used one section of that school since it's so centrally located?
There was an engineering study previously done while Mr. Greenleaf was here, which indicated that the structure of that building, that, the underpinnings of the gym and stuff were not, would not support such, for instance, the robotics. If you saw the robotics equipment, it's, I mean, you're talking about very, I mean, tons of equipment that they use, lathes and milling machines, et cetera. So without doing another study and having an engineer come in there and take a look at it, I would, I wouldn't say yes or no to that without doing that first.
Okay. Gretchen?
Hey, um, the school that was at the Northeast site prior to Northeast, does anybody remember if that school, I mean, it was, it had mold issues?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a wet site.
So we know it's a wet site. So as we move forward with the Cutler site, we know that's a wet site. It is, believe me, it floods a lot in that area.
Actually, they're, they're raising it three feet, right? The Cutler, the new Cutler Elementary School?
Yeah, that's going, that has to be raised in order to build a building on it, yes.
Okay, that is excellent.
The architects.
And as far as using SB Butler as a STEM or a community center or for the Falcons, what I'm hearing from the numerous stores that I have knocked on and, believe me, it's been a lot of doors in District Six and Seven and Three and anyway, it's all over. They are actually supportive of putting, because we've got the Fitch Middle as a community center, they're actually thinking that it's not a bad horrible plan to keep one school that we can eventually, that we keep up, that we can use as a swing space if we ever need it and to keep it viable as, I think the, I can even think of a STEM center, but we have talked about using it as a preschool, nat, nursery school building, putting, centralizing all those. But yeah, I've gotten a lot of positive, I think we might be able to get support from keeping that as an active playgrounds and it's, it's really a beautiful.
It supports it, that's why it's here.
I can't promise you everybody, but I.
Right, well, that's why it's on the.
I'll take you with me if you want to go for a walk.
No, we, we put it there for, for that reason.
All those new buildings. Jake, did you have another comment?
Uh, no, I think I've said enough.
Do we have, do we have any other questions?
Nope.
Well, the question I have is, I have to tomorrow, let me, let me tell you what I think we have. We have a football field that I'm sensing consensus, put that in for $200,000. Move those portables, we'll work to, with architects. If they could be permanent, that would be delightful. $104,000 Fuss O'Neil recommendation as a placeholder, we'll see where we are with humidity as we, and, and active dehumidification. So the big question that I have for the board is, I could put in $750,000 and we know that the town, if we don't put anything, then the town won't consider it. If we put $750,000 in as a placeholder, then we have a conversation.
Have people are in agreement to that?
I, I still would like to know the difference with Claude Chester as a more central spot.
I know you hear that that's a, a central spot, but Sam has continuously talked about that with us.
No, he said that was a while ago.
Let's have one conversation.
I, I still think we need to compare them, I mean.
Well, it wouldn't be $750,000 because we've already removed the asbestos. So what we could do, Rita, is put this in as a placeholder, talk about the study, which hopefully wouldn't be too expensive, would it? I mean, could we, could we have that, could we conduct that within our operating budget?
Probably not, I would say, well, it'd probably be at least $50,000.
Oh, God.
So, but this goes back to the, the RTM town council conversation that we've had that we keep on going over and over again. I'm in favor of putting placeholder for $750,000 that we can then have a conversation because we can always take it out.
And we might, and we might switch it.
Okay. But I, I just think we've had this conversation.
I'm putting in $750.
Over and over.
Okay, so here, here's a vote. $200,000 football field, $125,000 portables, 104 as a placeholder for the indoor air quality and $750,000 for the, the roof and the asbestos abatement at SB Butler.
Katrina?
I wanted to clarify before we moved on. The study would be $50,000, you're estimating. Yeah, okay. Or can we look at the study, can they, we just get it updated from what's already been done?
I have to find that study first.
Okay, well, that would be a good place to start.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. We'll get on that right away.
And can we get a written, can we get something written about it?
Sure, absolutely.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the, the FY 21 CIP, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion has carried.
One abstention.
One abstention, Rita? Jane, would you be willing to read the motion for number two of new business? Just the motion, not the discussion, please. It's at the bottom of page two.
Okay.
And to approve the 2020, 21 and the 2021 and 22 school calendars.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I got Gretchen?
No, Rose, wait.
You were just seconding. So the discussion is we, this is another one of those examples where we've had lots of conversation within our community as a whole on this. Do we need to have any more discussion on this, folks? I think the biggest change that we had was that we are going to define the graduation date on. in February versus trying to set it right now because we just don't, the unknowns of snow days. And that because Fitch has moved away from the post-graduation party, it makes us more flexible for doing that. And this brings us back to having Columbus Day on that.
It brings us back to Columbus Day and two days for President's Weekend. And at least on mine, it still says graduation, but we need to strike that.
That's right.
We're not gonna, on neither, the last one doesn't have it. So on the 2021, I'm scratching out 6/25 graduation, and that decision will be made in February.
And maybe that can be added to the school calendar, is that graduation date?
Graduation to be deter, yeah, okay, good.
To be determined in February so that people know
Yep.
that we haven't just had an absent-minded moment. Lee?
In other words, for Thanksgiving, the four days, that's both next year and the year after.
Correct. Yep, this is Jay Whiteoff Memorial Holiday. Thank you, Jay.
Andrea?
I just have a question about, Dr. Granera said Columbus Day, but the calendar says Indigenous People Day. And I wonder why we changed that.
Oh.
I think we talked about it needed to go back to Columbus Day because that is sort of what the state has it, not that necessarily the board supports that.
And the contract has it that way, too. Yeah, I didn't even catch that, thank you. I'll change it to Columbus.
Right.
One more thing, I think we should point out that the calendars for next year and the year after, the school will start after Labor Day in order to make sure that the construction of the new middle school is going smoothly and we're all in, give people a chance to move in, and also the two new elementary schools. So both days, both years will be at them Tuesday after Labor Day, which is great. So that's why we're going longer in June because we, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is a full day. There's just a number of things in here besides the day after, starting after Labor Day.
And if people can help us with the snow days, that would be great. If they have any clout with the weather. All right, so do I need to make an amendment on that since we've changed a couple of things or just clarified?
Clarify, absolutely.
Okay, but we didn't amend it. Okay. All right, so any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the 2020, '21 and the 2021, '22 school calendars, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion has carried. All right.
Point of personal order. I'd like to recognize Joan Johnson for keeping us honest.
All right. I absolutely appreciate that. I appreciate you very much. Rosemary, would you please be willing to read motion for number three, please?
This is a motion to approve the class size guidelines.
All right, can I have a second?
Second?
I've got Lee, discussion.
This is, these are the guidelines that the board approved last year. So K1, you can see at 20, a little bit higher for grades two and three at 23 and grades four through 12, maximum would be 25. Although in practice, we really try to keep class sizes 23. When it gets above 23, we are concerned. But there are some special areas where we only have a certain number of stations, like technology, education, and some of the, I know, some of the music classes are considerably larger than that. Some of the special ed classes are smaller than that. Counselor ratio, library media specialists, and so forth. These are what was that semester.
Any other, Rita?
I have a question about the media specialists at the high school. And how many are there, if you could give back to us?
I think there's just one.
I know that, and I've, so I've always questioned why we have 500 to one when there's over 1,100 students at the high school.
And there will be next year at the middle school.
So that's what I was curious, what they were gonna, what you were gonna do at the middle school, if there were gonna be two media specialists or just one?
My thought was just one. So we.
Well, then it doesn't meet our guideline. I mean, not that it has, these are just guidelines from the Board of Education, but you need to, if there is just one media specialist, there always has to be like a library.
Yes, that's true.
And I know the high school has it, but it's difficult.
And the middle school will have one, too.
It's still difficult. And I know, I'd like you to review the guidance counselors at the high school. I do believe that now that our, the number of students there has gone down, I think some of them have like 150 to one guidance counselors to students. So I think we should review to see the size of our, you know, high school and how many guidance counselors we have. And do we have to adjust it for our middle school? Could one maybe be moved down to the middle school now that, you know, we have almost the same amount of middle school?
Okay, we'll take a look at that.
But that doesn't have anything to do necessarily about the class size.
But I just wanted, since we were talking about them, I wanna make sure we address them.
No, I think that's great.
Ted has recommendations on that, too, so.
Awesome. Any other conversations about our, the guidelines for the class sizes for this upcoming year? All right, hearing none, all those in favor to approve the class size guidelines as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? One opposition. Any abstains? The motion has carried, that would be Gretchen, yep?
Yep.
All right, so we're gonna be moving on to attachment number 10, which is the 2020 board meeting schedule, which has to get into the town, is the town clerk, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it looks like, once again, we could always, we could always add a meeting, it becomes a special meeting, or we can cancel if we don't see that we have enough business to hold a meeting. Any questions?
Yeah, I really feel that that's too many meetings in the summer. You know, it was always a little reduced. We have quite a few.
Oh, perfect, make a motion. Yeah, could we have a, yeah, could we?
I'll second it.
Could you just make a motion to?
I thought we read the motion.
No?
No one read it?
Nobody read it.
I'll read it. Thank you, sorry.
To approve the 2020 board meeting schedule.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Pick. All right, discussion.
Okay, I feel that there should be one less meeting, one of the less COW meetings in the summer. It's difficult to get people together and.
We actually only have.
I would propose July 20 and August 17th get canceled.
That's what I was thinking.
Which ones, which ones?
August 17th.
Keep 13 and 27, COW and a board meeting, and keep 10 and 24, but cancel 20, July 20 and August 17th. Hard to get a quorum.
Both those?
Anyway.
Or one?
Both.
People are agreement to that?
I will agree as long as Lee promises a birthday cake on August 10th.
Okay.
All right.
We'll write that down.
And Jay, with your permission, I put in, second line from the bottom, the first Monday of the month will be at 6:00 PM, we could meet, given the new circumstances. That's okay with you?
Sure, thank you.
Great.
All righty, so do I have to have, this is just clarifying again? Okay, all right. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the Groton Board of Education Committee meetings for 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. So we now need to move on to the two that were given to us earlier in the day. Well, the night, sorry. And Lee, would you please read the motion for number nine?
I will. A motion to approve a hiking club field trip, May 20th through 23rd, 2020, to New Hampshire.
Can I have a second?
Second.
There's Rosemary for the second. Dr. Granera.
Well, I think, we've typed this quickly today, discussion regarding, could we put in a Charles Barnham School hiking field trip? That's what the, this is Mr. Danish's trip, a CB hiking club. This is the trip he has taken many years ago with the middle school and now the fourth year, I think, with Charles Barnham. And I know he's been conducting his Friday experiences. I think next weekend, they're gonna have in-state, they're gonna have an overnight. So it's really a remarkable program, which includes, by the way, students in the regular program as well as sometimes students from the academy program. And it's just really, well, he's a remarkable person and the program is terrific.
Do we have any other further discussion about this? This is something we have proved for several years. All right, hearing none, all those in favor to approve the Charles Barnham Hiking Club Field Trip, May 20th to the 23rd into 2020 to New Hampshire, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. Rita, would you please approve, would you, would you please approve? Would you, I think what I need you to do is, would you please read the motion?
For number 10.
Yes.
The motion is to approve the operation of Charles Barnham Elementary School as a magnet school beginning in the fall of 2020-2021.
Can I have a second to this?
No, sorry, that's wrong. It's scratched out, it's just 21.
21.
Yeah, it's not next fall. It's the fall after.
It's 2021.
Beginning in the fall of 2021. Just scratch out 2020.
Thank you. It has been seconded. Andrea? So this is also something, to Jay's point, that we've had lots of conversation about with that because it is, it is sort of holding all of our elementary schools with a magnet, with a magnet-themed program. Rita?
I do feel it should say, as an intra-district magnet school, a true magnet school.
Good idea.
I really feel that all our magnet schools are intra-district.
Intra.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
So we could.
Yep.
And then the theme is to be determined.
Yep.
Do you wanna put that in the motion? Theme to be determined?
All right.
All right, so we'll just amend it to intra-district.
Okay, so I don't need amendment, we're just clarifying, or, okay. All those in favor of the motion that's on the floor to approve the operation of Charles Barnham Elementary School as an intra-district magnet school for the fall of 2021, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? The motion has carried. So what's left on our agenda is the possibility that we're gonna be going into an executive session. I do wanna call the board's attention to, that would be just number seven, that we just need more information for number six to happen, so that's gonna be scratched. And eight, I think, are already mentioned, and that was about the contract. So because we have so many good folks that are here, I'm just, would like the opportunity to be able to put a placeholder on that, have us continue the rest in terms of just communications with the rest of the, with the rest of us, and then go back into an executive session. Does that meet people's needs? So Katrina, do you have any letters or communications?
I think I got the same email thread that everyone else did about the robotics team. I went to the Sounds by the Sea, that was a lot of fun. And then the principal's retirement party, the high school principal's retirement party. And my committee meetings, not much.
Gretchen?
I've been very occupied with things that have to do with schools and have heard from many, many people, and I told them, please write it down and email me.
Okay.
Because I can't, if I sit here, I'll be talking to you all night long.
All right.
Is that it? That's it.
Awesome, thank you.
Great people, though. Fantastic experience talking to hundreds of people in town, just walking, hey, I'm.
Thank you.
It's been fabulous.
Thank you, I'm glad. Jane?
I did something a bit different. As a rotarian, I visited Barnham School to help distribute dictionaries and what I learned. What I learned was great. The kids were so enthusiastic, they were pleased. They recalled the dictionaries that their older brothers and sisters got for Rori, and they still have them, so now they have their own. It was delightful, it really was. They were just extremely, it was like Christmas morning in these classrooms. And I'm serious about it.
Yeah.
They respect the dictionaries, they enjoy using them, and they were just extremely pleased.
Yay!
I then went to, with or without, to the MLK Dinner and thoroughly enjoyed it. I was thinking back to maybe 15 years ago when I attended that same dinner. Back then, the recipients were extremely shy, extremely quiet, and how times have changed. The kids this year were so full of life, they were sure of themselves. They didn't mind talking about growing up in families enduring serious, very serious problems, we can only imagine. They talked about their traumas, for example, you know, things that had changed and molded them. One boy told about being attacked by two pit bulls who removed his ears. That was his trauma. This boy was just chosen as first cadet at the Coast Guard Academy starting in the fall. One girl talked about having her bedroom in the trunk of a car. She had a pillow, a comforter, and an open trunk. It was that sort of thing. But the kids, for the most part, were extremely enthusiastic, very sure of themselves, and have their rightful place in society now, they're not whispering, and they're proud of what they're doing. They talked about activities that were involved in the community and in their school, and how they've grown, and how proud they are to have received the scholarship. Thanks to this lady.
Yes.
That evening was wonderful. We got to see the videotapes, the videos of the kids getting word that they were recipients. We learned where the kids are going to school and what majors they are, or fields of work that they're interested in, for good reason. One girl wants to be a neurosurgeon because she had a very serious medical problem and is alive to tell about it. They're very serious, very mature kids. And she has worked with kids, I don't know how long, but she threw herself into getting this just right with the kids. And that because of her work, the families were treated well, they were proud to be there. The kids spoke right up, were proud to be there. And the guests were ecstatic, really ecstatic about the donations that the companies, organizations are making to help these kids. So kudos, kudos. It was just a wonderful, wonderful evening.
I wish I could take all the credit. The Martin of the King Board of Trustees is entirely voluntary. And the whole team of board membership works diligently throughout the year. So I'm happy that I get to get the kudos for the things that you see, but the things that you don't see are far more, far more serious than what we've done. But thank you for that, and I thank you from the scholars.
She practices all year working at the Coast Guard Academy. So she's just in sync with these kids and is a perfect person to do this.
Thank you. I did wanna mention the MLK Dinner, only inasmuch as, in addition to the scholars and all of the, and it was a capacity crowd this year, 700 people came to listen to this and to celebrate with the recipients. But among those are two eighth grade students from each of the middle schools in New Linden County, and one of their parents, which we support through donations. And it was a wonderful thing to see the scholars speak to those middle school students and just encourage them with their words, and as you said, with their experiences, and to encourage them not to give up. The, I wanted to mention in particular our scholar from Fitch High School, which is, who is Melissa Mancuso. And in addition to that, Aleah Staten, who is Town Councilor, Julia Parker's daughter, Juliet, I should say, and Ajaya Brown, of course, who is the number one recruit at the Coast Guard Academy, and the Admiral himself went to Marine Science to give him his appointment. And in addition to that, Ajaya Brown is the captain of Fitch High School's field and track and cross-country teams.
And basketball.
And basketball.
Oh, and basketball, yes. Yes. Anyway, that's what I've been up to, and thank you very much. Oh, and we have two more things. One of the things is something that Mr. Boe Newsom said tonight. I've been thinking about that. The community space at Cutler. And if we do attend to that, I would like to see something at Westside for that community as well.
Yes.
And the second thing is I heard you say, and that is there would be 30 students from Westside and 30 students from Cutler who visit the site. And I'm wondering if we could combine those so that it's not from Cutler, from Westside, but a combination of both.
Yeah, we're trying to do that.
Okay, that's it.
I just wanted to highlight, and Addie knows this is true. Not only do they make their speech in front of 700 students, but we had a group of 50 students, and I said to Melissa, can you give your speech again? And how great did she deliver it? She delivered it with complete poise. And the kids, you know, your peers in the round, she was walking around. I mean, she gave that speech. It was just... It was remarkable. I was a little uncomfortable asking her in front of her peers. And she delivered it, and boy, she is...
Dr. Mancuso.
She is. When they... When she said, "I will be Dr. Mancuso," that place just erupted. It was very impressive.
Jane?
And I regret that, for the first time in years, I had reserved a seat at the MLK dinner, but my job...
I enjoyed your dessert, thank you.
I'm glad someone got something out. I was unable to attend. But I'm beginning to think that Mystic Marriott may need to expand their facilities.
Yeah.
Because how many people show up there?
Do you have other things? Okay. Rosemary?
I was not also unable... I was also unable to attend because of my coughing gag, which I thank you for the cough drop. It's much better. Can you imagine what it would have been like there?
Other things that you've attended?
I also went to the farm-to-school dinner, which was delicious. And I was able, through Yale, to attend a workshop on pediatric concussions, which was very informative.
Great, thank you.
Especially the changes in the treatment.
Thank you.
I went to the marching band, which was wonderful. I went to Joe's retirement dinner, which was just great fun and delicious food. I went to the farm-to-school dinner. God, I can't even read what it's called. The MLK dinner, of course. And also, on my way here tonight, I noticed that the screens at the fences are gone so that when you drive right up here, you can see everything. I'm just... It's very...
Is that neon green? It's pretty cool, huh?
It's very space. That's what I've been doing.
All right. Rita?
I did all the things that... Attended everything that Lee did, the Farm-to-Table. I was really impressed with the culinary arts students sat there. Apple crisp was not... They also had a gluten-free can of apple crisp. That was just really delicious. So, that was really nice. The MLK dinner was phenomenal. And also, the band competition and Mr. Arcares's retirement party. And I attended a soccer game.
Awesome.
Which was fun.
I didn't. See, you didn't.
I did one more thing.
So, I have attended most things that have been mentioned. I did not make it to the Farm-to-Table. So, it has been a very busy month for us. I do want to let people know that I have received the same emails as everyone else did about the robotics. And it's actually Dr. Grinear is sort of on that and handling sort of that. And we will be having a committee of the whole conversation just so that the board can be more updated on that. Just wanted to let people know that there was an anonymous letter that was given to a couple or at least one board member. But another of the board members have been approached about some things. And so, that is in our human resource director's hands for her to kind of take a look at. But just wanted to let people know that there is a fraud hotline that's available for people to use if they foresee that. And also, the board does hold a policy for whistleblower so that... Which basically means that they will not suffer any... Bring something forward that they will not suffer anything. So, we just wanted to make sure that they knew about that. Just for the board to know as well is that I received a correspondence this morning from Claire Rogers, who's doing a lot of the senior activities. And there has not been a discussion or decision made by the senior class. And so, the parents are not wanting to kind of go any further about the after-party for the prom. So, that it's basically in limbo, and that's sort of where that is. All right. So, moving forward, just to look that we have the advanced planning. If you thought October was busy, you should probably take a look at November. And that down below is the meeting dates for the town bodies, November 6. And I just need to see if there's willingness for people to do that since it's the day after election. So, I don't know how people are gonna feel about that. But I will throw that out to the body, that liaison body. And so, Rita, I heard you say a couple of things about suggested agenda items. Is really having Dr. Grinear look at what did that mean for, in terms of budget for media specialists? I didn't see that.
Guidance counselors.
And guidance counselors. So, I didn't necessarily see that as an agenda item outside of that it is part of the budget discussions.
You might wonder. I mean, I'd also like to look at the class sizes. We haven't had an update on all the schools' class sizes.
So, you would like to have an agenda item on what the current class sizes are?
Yeah, and which would include the guidance counselors and everything.
Okay, that actually makes perfect sense.
And I just want... I thought the board had a policy that we couldn't actually address something that was written to us that wasn't signed.
Well, the only difference is, if you remember last year, the auditor suggested including a fraud hotline. And that is anonymous. Somebody can call in.
I meant something that's addressed to the board.
Yeah, correct.
It is just placed in the human resource file.
That's what I thought.
Yep.
That's what I remembered.
All right.
But we never... Not everybody gets to see it.
Right. So, that's correct because it's... Right. We are now going to... I will take a motion to have us go into an executive session for purposes... Thank you. So, for purposes of the discussion of retirement. And I would like to add to that motion that we invite Dr. Grinear, Mr. Knight, and...
Susan.
And Susan.
I think so. Yes, please.
All right.
Not Addie.
So moved.
So, so moved? All right. Katrina has seconded. All right. So, we are now gonna be going into an executive session. And so, if people could...